Well, good evening, everybody. We'd like to welcome you tonight to our Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021 Hendersonville Regional Planning Commission meeting, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. And the first thing on the agenda tonight is the opening prayer. I do want to remember one of our fire marshals who works with the Planning Commission, Mr. Shane Nolan, Officer Shane Nolan. He is a cyclist and suffered an accident this past weekend and is pretty laid up right now. So remember him in your thoughts and your prayers that he'll get well quickly. So let's just have a word of prayer tonight. Lord, we come before you this evening, and we thank you for your blessings to all of us, and we thank you for specifically the city of Hendersonville and all that it means to us. We thank you for the beautiful land that we have here because of you. And tonight, Lord, we pray that you would just give us wisdom as we conduct the city's business as it relates to planning. We ask that you would be with us. And tonight, we pray for Shane, Lord, that you would just come in and touch his body, touch his face specifically where he was hurt, and we're just thanking you for healing and speedy recovery. And we pray all these things in your name. Amen. Amen. All right. I would note tonight that I think everybody is present. I don't see anybody. Darlene Stringfellow is absent. Okay? So we have nine here. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is a request by MCG Hendersonville TIC 4 LLC to amend the Hazel Path Commons final development plan to add car wash to the list of permitted uses. This property is located at the south side of East Main, on the west side of Anita Parkway, as identified Summer County Tax Map 159KA 023.00. And the chair would note that there is nobody signed up for that hearing tonight, and so I will declare that hearing closed. The next hearing we have tonight is a request by Jack Patel to rezone 0.27 acres from suburban residential medium-density SR2 to general commercial GC. The request also includes an amendment to the general framework map of the Hendersonville Land Use and Transportation Plan to change the character error designation of the property from suburban living to suburban center. And the property is located on the east side of New Shackel Island Road and the south side of Iris Drive, as identified on Summer County Tax Map 160EA 019.00. And the chair would note tonight that there is nobody signed up for that hearing as well, so we will declare that hearing closed. Item number four on the agenda. Do we have any requests for information and assistance from any of the members? Hearing none. Additions to the agenda. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. We have the minutes of July 6, 2021. Do we have a motion? Mr. Altizer moves. Second by Ms. Silkwood. Any questions? Any issues? Okay, all right. We'll do a roll call vote. All in favor? Go ahead.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Hardcastle? Longmire? Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Stringfellow? Oh, she's not here. Jenkins?
Yes.
All right. That's eight and one abstention.
Okay, very good. We have the final plats now, which is the Barnes Estates Final Plat on Michael Barnes' location east side of Stadium Drive. They agreed to all staff comments. Grant, you got anything you want to tell us about this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this was two existing single-family lots that the developer has requested to resubdivide into five lots, which is allowed by the OTR zoning. They have agreed to all staff comments.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Green? Ms. Longmire?
Where am I? Am I on? On the report that we've got here, there's a statement that says this will likely be a two-car pad for each lot. What does that mean, it'll likely be?
Actually, it's required by our zoning, so they have the two single, like two 9x18 spaces, and that's one thing that we've been working to try to make sure that developments like this do have the minimum requirement on that. So on the, we made sure on the plat that they added a plat note that they would require the two 9x18 spaces would be required for each of the lots.
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Longmire?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Free?
Yeah, I may just mention, that's just the likely to be a two-car pad, but as Mr. Green had said, there's a requirement on there for them to have two parking spaces, but it possibly could end up being more, depending on the configuration of the home, and they could provide additional.
Is that on their line?
Yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't see any other lights. Do I have a motion from somebody on the commission to accept with all staff comments?
Move to accept with all staff comments.
Second.
Mr. Altizer moves, and Ms. Silkwood seconds, properly does that. Any more discussion? All right, this roll call vote. Ms. Berry?
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire? Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Thank you. Move on now to development plans. This is Hazel Path Commons FDP add-on, the ad use. Car wash would might like to note that this is just an add-on, and it's a minor change, so we want to make sure we understand that. The owner is MCG Hendersonville TIC LLC, locations at 393 East Main, parcel 159A 023. Mr. Witten, tell us about this one.
Okay. So this is at the corner of Anita and East Main Street. It's an outlot in the front of the Ghost Dorit facility there in Hazel Path Shopping Center. So the applicant is requesting to add a car wash to the list of allowed uses in that planned development. And this car wash would be a full service, similar to the full service that's in River Gate. Similar in terms of the level and type of service, not necessarily as far as how it will look or the layout. But the current FDP that you see there does show a building in that location, so this is in substantial compliance as far as just, you know, having a building at that location. They are requesting a waiver that the zoning ordinance prohibits any overhead doors from facing a street. And because this car wash has pull-through bays, five pull-through bays, and this is a corner lot, there's not really a way to orient the building in such a way that it doesn't face one of the two streets. So they have provided a landscape island, if you can see colored there in green, that they would provide some vegetation, that would provide some screening of three of those lower overhead doors. They have agreed to change the doors themselves from kind of a lower-grade roll-up type door to a storefront glazed-type door that looks more like a retail-type door. So they've agreed to do that, but they are requesting that waiver.
Okay. Mr. Witten, I think a little history, since we are doing a add-on here, let the Planning Commission know previously, I remember when we did this before, there were actually restaurants that were, am I correct on that?
I believe, well, restaurant isn't allowed use, but the FDP actually just indicates, the buildings themselves just say future building, so they were not specific to a particular use.
Right. So, but a restaurant, in other words, buildings could have gone there.
Could be a restaurant.
Yeah, it could have been that. Could have been that. Okay. All right. And the only question we have for the commission is the doors on the waiver. So walk us through how this building's going to sit in relation to where the doors will be on this property. Walk us through that.
Yeah, so can you go back to that other, yeah. So the, if you can see the kind of the red bars, the red bars highlight the overhead doors. So you've got, you've got four on the lower section of the building, and the fifth one is, I believe, their main service tunnel. It's at the top of the graphic there. So you enter the tunnels from the left side, and then you exit out towards Main Street.
Yeah, I was mentioning to Director Free, you know, obviously, the way that this looks, there'll be quite a bit of buffering along Main Street, but on Anita Parkway, they have got this buffer, and Director Free says they've also agreed to, what else did you say?
They've also agreed, one thing that we've been very interested in is having a connectivity, if you can go to that larger map, Lauren, that connectivity over to the old Jack in the Box?
Okay.
To have cross-access. If you go up to the kind of top right and circle that up there, yeah, right up in that area, yeah, right up in that area. That's okay. And so they've agreed to do a cross-access connection, easement and construction up to their property line, and then hopefully working with the adjacent property owner so that we have connectivity all the way off of Main Street. And this would go, I think this would connect to the Jack in the Box property, and I believe there are two other properties further to the west that also have access, so you'd be able to have access all the way down through there without getting on to Main Street.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Witten, I have a question. I believe on the, in our packet that we received, did one of these parcels allow for a car wash, but not this one in particular? Did I read that somewhere?
No, no, sir. The car wash is not currently permitted as a use.
For any of the parcels?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? I don't see, Ms. Silkwood?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Witten, I just have a quick question. Can you talk us through what the traffic pattern would be? Would the main entrance be off of Anita and circle around the building like that, and then exit back onto Anita?
So there's two, there's two entry points that are possible. I don't know that there is a main one, but if you enter from Main Street up there, yeah, at that right in, right out, then you're, you would turn, let you go past the car wash, turn left, enter the tunnels, and exit out, if you can go back to that previous one. Yeah. And then, and then exit, exit out to the, I believe, to the left. If you enter from Anita Parkway, you'd, from Main Street, you'd turn right into the site and then immediately start queuing up there to take a right and queue up to enter the tunnel. Actually, I'm incorrect about the first thing I said. I believe their model, they may have a representative here who can speak to the flow better than I can.
Please, if you'd like to, just come up to the podium and introduce yourself and...
I think it's not, it's not, the cars are given to an attendant, attendants to actually take them through the tunnel, so you can...
Correct. It's a full-service car wash, so you'll drop your car off, the attendant will take, I'm fart, sorry. My name is Stefan Bobot. I'm with SNME, the civil engineer. I have Chuck Hunt. He is the representative for the developer. And so basically, it's a full-service car wash. You drop your car off, and the main access is from Anita Parkway. If you see those arrows kind of at the bottom, that's where the queuing is going to start, and I wish I could go up there and point to it, but the queuing starts there. It goes up around to the most northern, page northern tunnel, which is the car wash. They drive through the car wash, then circle around to the four intermediate bays for detailing, waxing, washing the windows, that kind of stuff, and then they exit out from the page right, exit out and go back out to Anita Parkway. Cars can exit or enter the site from Gallatin Road, but it's a one-way in. Now, I'll have to get into the queuing and get back into the queue to get into the tunnel. So they can't, you can't exit into or Gallatin Pike from here.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that.
I'm sorry, the person drives their car through it. You don't give it to somebody. They drive their car through, but then they detail it, so.
Okay. One other question, and I'm not sure who to direct this to, but can someone speak to the, there was some mention in the packet about vacuums. Sounds like most of the vacuums will be in the building, and that's done by the attendants, but there will be some vacuums available for self-service. Can you talk through that? Will there be canopies specifically? Excuse me, and how will those look?
Do you have a pointer?
Do we have a rendering on that?
It's not working? All right. Oh, yeah. So Chuck's going to go up there and point to where the vacuums, so on the, if you page left side, where those parking stalls are, they're going to have a couple of vacuums set up there so people could get out and vacuum their car if they wanted to. So it's going to be blocked from Gallatin Road by the building and blocked from Anita Parkway by the landscaping.
Will those be covered with a canopy, or will they just be open?
They'll be covered with a canopy, I believe, yeah.
And how will those vacuum hoses be set up? Will they be overhead? Will they be underground? How will that end up looking? Or maybe you haven't gotten quite that far yet.
We haven't gotten that far, but I imagine it'll be overhead.
Okay. I mean, just for the aesthetics of it, I, you know, we've been through this discussion before as a planning commission, and I, for one, prefer them to be underground, just because I feel like it's a cleaner aesthetic. You don't have things hanging down from a canopy, just less visual clutter, if that makes sense. So that's my two cents.
And we noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hasty?
Where you're coming on and off of Anita Parkway, is that requiring an additional median cut?
No.
There's already one on Anita Parkway, right across from where your entrance nexus is.
Yes, because that's an existing entrance road into the storage unit, the old Walmart.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hasty. I don't see any other lights on. Okay. Mr. Peterson, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question. How many employees will you hire to work here at the car wash?
Twenty, I believe. Is that correct? Sixty, sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Longmire?
Employees, are they part-time? How many full-time do you anticipate?
It's hard to say. As long as the applicants, but they'll probably lose ten or so each full time. I mean, they can get, but so, but part-time, it's mostly college and high school students that want to.
Yeah, we can't hear that on the thing, so.
Thank you.
So sixty employees, and, you know, we'll have some full-time, but most of the applicants are going to be probably college students or high school students, so, you know, their hours are going to be less as far as what they want to work, so.
Okay. Ms. Longmire, anything else?
No, that's all.
Okay. Mr. Hardwick?
How many cars can be stacked up in the queue?
I think there's about twenty-four in that queue.
So, and it'll be a two-lane, so twelve cars per lane?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and count, but yes, and then it'll obviously go down to one as it gets closer to the car wash tunnel.
Thank you. Okay. I hear no other questions. Do we have a motion to accept with all staff comments and granting the waiver? We do need a motion on this, even if you're not for it. We need a motion to get it on the floor.
I'll make the motion to accept with all staff comments, including the waiver.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any more comments? Okay, Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
No.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hardwick?
No.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
No.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, that is six and three. It passes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, the next thing we have here is the site plan, which we've been talking about already. We've already, they've agreed to all staff comments, but we had to have a motion to accept this for the land use plan and to add-on and all these kind of things. So this is Cheerville that's coming up next. Yeah. All right. So the next thing we got is Cheerville Site Plan, owner Hazel Path Partners on Anita Parkway, parcel 159KA 019.01. Mr. Witten, turn it over to you.
Yes, so this is the second of three projects that are in this shopping center. So this one is Cheerville. It's located on the opposite end of the shopping center from Car Wash. It's on the end. It's near Meat Sweats and Bluegrass Bar and Grill. There are two lots down there undeveloped. They've been undeveloped for a long, long time, and now both of them are on the agenda. This one's Cheerville. It's a seventeen thousand, five hundred square foot gym facility, and it is already a permitted use, so there's no need, no request for adding a use. This is just a site plan, and that they have agreed to all staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. Okay, we'll open it up for questions to the commissioners about the plan. Ms. Silkwood?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I noticed in some of the planning comments about the exterior of the building, the aesthetics of it, that I guess it was, yeah, you, Mr. Witten, you'd mentioned consider using the same or similar brick colors as Half Batch Brewing, and I think that's an excellent suggestion. You know, I think having two completely dissimilar buildings right next to each other will look odd, and I particularly like the look of, you know, we haven't discussed it yet, but the Half Batch aesthetic. So, you know, I don't know what we can do to try to move that along, but I think that's something that we really need to have as a discussion point, just to make sure that it looks cohesive over on that end of Hazel Path Commons and not, you know, two buildings right next to each other that are just completely, dissimilar is the best word I can use for that. So that's more of a comment.
Okay, Mr. Witten, of course, they've agreed with, they're in compliance with all the materials.
They are currently in compliance. They've agreed to all staff comments, but that staff comment is not a requirement. It's just, it's just telling, asking them to consider it.
Okay, so is somebody here from Cheerville tonight? Would you please introduce yourself, and can you explain to us? I mean, you know, technically, the other building that we're talking about is not approved yet, so, you know, but if this comes along and we have the situation, we have two really good-looking buildings, but there's quite a difference in them. And so can you speak to that, and what would be your comfort level in changing some of the colors on that?
Yes, sir. My name is Mitchell Lastly with Green Lit Design, and we have discussed this with the client, and they are open to working with staff. I haven't seen the building for Half Batch, but yes, we are open to working with the staff.
Okay, that's all we needed to hear, because I think, I think that obviously, we're not asking that there be cookie cutter the same. It could be variation. It looks like this building's going to vary, but I think if there could be a little bit more coordination, if Half Batch goes, that would be great.
Would this be more of like brick coloring or pattern?
Just the color. I mean, that's why I'm saying the materials are there, but it just might be a color variation. And if you're open to that, working with staff?
Yes, sir.
I think we can come up with something really nice-looking, and it's going to look very good on that corner, I think, so. All right. Okay, Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I have a question for Cheerville. I believe, is that cheerleading? What exactly is Cheerville?
Yes, sir. They have classes teach cheerleading.
And would there be any other uses in this building besides cheerleading, like maybe indoor soccer or... indoor soccer, or something, does that affect?
I'm not aware of any other uses.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, having raised two cheerleaders, Tim knows what I'm talking about here, there's a ton of people that will be on that site, and it's unreal how many people they have. But, yeah, any other questions?
Just, just a quick comment, Mr. Chairman, I think this is an exciting expansion, because you all already have a place here in Hendersonville, and I know some folks who, you know, send their sons and daughters there for cheerleading, so I think it's an exciting opportunity for Cheerville, and obviously good for Hendersonville.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any more questions?
Quick question for Mr. Whitten.
Yeah.
Can you explain the comment number one, talking about three hundred and eighty-one parking spaces versus seven hundred parking spaces?
That comment actually got, got cut off, there's a preceding part to that, but it still holds true. The, the parking ratios and counts that were given were just incorrect, the way they were calculated, there's different ways that you could calculate this, but there's a precedent that's already been set with this shopping center, so that comment is just asking them to bring that in line with the already-established way of counting the parking spaces. So there's, there's no issue as far as them having sufficient parking spaces, it's just getting the data correct on the plan.
So they will have plenty of parking?
Yes. And I, another-
They're gonna need it.
Obviously, they will.
And do you have one additional staff comment that I need to add, and that is approval, the site plan is conditioned on approval of the plat, I'm sorry, recording of the plat. Plat's already been approved, but approval is conditioned on-
It's been approved, but it has to be recorded.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any more questions? All right, do we have a motion to accept with all staff comments, along with them working with staff on the color, as well as the recording of the plat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with all staff comments, and also making, sorry, working with staff on the color of the building. Thank you.
I'll second it, Dave.
Thank you, second it. All right, we have a first and a second. Any more questions? Hearing none, Ms. Berry.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, that's all nine.
Thank you.
Okay, the next plan we have is Half Batch Brewery, you got the site plan before you. Mr. Whitten?
This is next door to Cheerville, on the north side of Cheerville, Half Batch will be relocating from within the shopping center to this new location, so it's already in existing use there. This is an eleven thousand six hundred square foot brewery, and they have agreed with all staff comments, and I need to add the same one, but I'll just add for Cheerville, and that is approval is subject to recording of the plat.
Okay. All right, any questions? Hearing none, do we have a first, our motion to accept with all staff comments and recording of the plat?
Motion to accept with all staff comments and recording of the plat?
Second.
You have a second by Mr. Peterson? Any, I think I saw a question by, Mr., you have a question?
I was just gonna second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coker, I appreciate that. I appreciate that over there. All right, so we have a first and a second. Any more questions? Hearing none. Ms. Altizer, you have a question?
No, I just know what's next.
All right. Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hardwick?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, so the next thing we have here is the rezones, which is the New Shackle Island Subway for the Future Land Use Development Plan Amendment, character change from suburban living to a regional activity center, and they've agreed to all of the staff comments. Does anybody want to speak to this? Mr. Free, you want to?
I may just mention, and Mr. Whitten did a great job on his staff report, very thorough, one thing I just may mention is that we're looking at, this first item that we're gonna be looking at is an amendment to the future land use map, and one thing I might explain about that, and it was kind of explained a little bit in Mr. Whitten's comments, is that over in that area, the staff feels very strongly that there is some error in the past on what the future land use along New Shackle Island should have been, back when, when that was updated years ago. So this is, I think it's gonna appear from the land use standpoint, future land use standpoint, that there's nothing else over there that fits this character area that's being requested, but I think, I think more than likely that was an error for that area, and this whole area of New Shackle Island is, is, is an area of town that I think when we do eventually update our land use, our future land use map, more than likely we would bring it in line with what's being requested here tonight, so I just kind of wanted to, to share that. And if anybody had any specific questions about the application, Mr. Whitten could answer that, we might have a representative here as well, from the developer, the applicant.
Are there any questions, Mr. Hardwood?
I just need to say that while I'm happy to participate in the discussion and to answer any questions, I represented Mr. Patel in the purchase of this property, he's a client of mine, so I'll need to recuse on the voting.
Thank you very much, we understand that. Mr. Peterson?
Yeah, I have a question for Dr. Director Free.
Hey, that's a promotion.
What is a regional activity center?
What a regional activity center is, it's one of the character areas in our future land use map designation, and that would be areas like you would see up New Shackle Island, that might have a McDonald's, a podiatrist, a chiropractor, Dunkin' Donuts, Dollar General Store, those different types of uses, a medical office building could be something that could be within, within that area. So those are the types of things that you would see, so everything really north of that and somewhat south of it, car wash, laundry, you know, a coin laundry, all those kind of things would be things you would find within that specific character district.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hasty?
I noticed in the reports, it says that the owner expressed an interest to combine these two lots into one lot. You know, is that something that you anticipate's gonna happen? And I, I see this lot here by itself as being extremely difficult to build on with the stream buffer, and then trying to get access onto New Shackle Island Road.
Yes, it is something where it's been expressed by the applicant, that their, their interest is to combine those, they're just requesting the rezoning for this, this parcel, but I guess it's the, the future land use on both parcels, because the corner lot is already, is already zoned commercial, so you could do a subway there, but it's not large enough to do it, so.
On the corner lot?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of small, yeah.
I don't see anybody building a single-family residential unit there, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with the changing.
It looks like there's a deep grade.
Yeah, but it just needs to be all combined for one good site plan for all of it, I think.
And this is something, as far as from a, from a traffic flow and transportation issue, it's something that definitely our Public Works Department will look at that once we would get to a site plan, and evaluate whether, you know, access would be limited. I don't know if we're prepared to discuss that tonight. Sarah Locke is here, she's the interim Public Works Director, I don't know if she's prepared-
Sarah, you want to speak to this real quick?
Yes, I did make a comment that the access to New Shackle would be restricted, so if fire requires two, two access points, then we would allow a right-in, right-out, but I think that we would want to restrict it to that.
Okay, this would be a great opportunity to have a break, since she spoke. Sarah, why don't you introduce yourself, and?
Sarah Locke, I'm currently the interim Public Works Director.
Glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
Sure are. Okay, back to the matter at hand. Okay. Any more questions? Mr. Hasty, did that answer your question that you needed?
Yes, I think, you know, we got a site plan coming along down the road.
Yes, sir.
We're, we're gonna address all that if that-
Yes, sir.
Very good, very good. All right, I don't see any other lights here, so do we have a motion to amend our future land use plan to change this part, this particular submittal from suburban living to regional activity center? Do we have a motion to that effect? So moved by Ms. Longmire, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Altizer seconds it. Any more questions? Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
That's all eight.
Okay, so now we're gonna go to the site plan, and it's the same project, so Mr. Whitten, I'm just gonna turn over to you.
The site plan?
The rezoning, yeah.
Okay, the rezoning. So, yeah, so this, this lot, you can see the zoning map there on the screen, lot is zoned SR2, suburban residential, medium density. The property to the north and the west is all zoned general commercial, and then the property to the south and the east is zoned SR2. So with the request to, to GC, obviously that, that pushes the general commercial zoning closer to existing residential. The house to the, the south of the lot has a house on it, as does the house to the, to the east of it. There is a, a stream that runs across the bottom southwest corner of the site, and there's a stream buffer associated with that, so that, that could provide a natural transition from residential to a, a commercial zoning. I, I can't say for sure that they could not encapsulate that, that stream and develop that portion of it. I think Sarah could probably speak to whether or not that could be done, or the likelihood of that happening, but.
Sarah, you want to jump in here on that particular point Mr. Whitten makes?
I think it would be very unlikely as part of this project. If we ever widen New Shackle in the future, that would be something that we would, we would probably do at that time, but I think that the overall process and cost of that would, it would be unlikely with this project.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Hasty?
I'm sorry, forgot to put it off.
Yeah, okay. All right, I don't see any more questions here, so what we need here is a, we're going to BOMA with this. So we need a recommendation, and the finding's a fact, that it doesn't adverse, adverse traffic, there's no traffic adverse situation here, that it is in character with those things that are around it, and what else can we say here? And it now conforms to the, the land use plan. We have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second, motion by Silkwood, second by, who, Mr. Hasty? Peterson, I didn't hear it over there, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Any more questions? Any more discussion? Ms. Berry, call the roll.
Altizer?
Yes.
Coker?
Yes.
Hardcastle?
Yes.
Hasty?
Yes.
Longmire?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Silkwood?
Yes.
And Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, that's all eight.
Okay, so that goes forward to BOMA. Staff-level projects that are approved, I'll not take the time to read all these, staff level, staff-level projects pending, you can see those there, there's no, nothing under other, we'll go to planning director comments, Mr. Free.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a few, a few items. One thing is just to let you know that next week, the Hallmark Hyundai parking, parking land use, or ad use is going back before BOMA at their meeting next Tuesday. Also, the 216 Sanders Ferry Combined Plan Development rezoning is going before BOMA next week, as well as the text amendment changes that we had to make regarding the building materials, and I might note that that meeting, next, the BOMA meeting, is going to be held at the Hendersonville High School Gymnasium, and so that's gonna happen, so that's just some of the things that are going on there. Also, you know, I just might mention the Hazel Path, Hazel Path development, we had several things tonight, we had Half Batch and Cheerville, and the ad of the Car Wash, there's a lot of things going on there, in that area, and I think it's a very good example. This, this, this kind of thing rarely happens in a redevelopment effort of kind of a large old strip center, but I think as this area has redeveloped over the last couple of years, and continues, I think this is a great example of how, as we have older commercial areas and strip centers, as they kind of age out, this is gonna be a good example of, of how things can develop, as well as from an economic development standpoint, you know, we've got a lot of things going on here, you know, especially with Cheerville. Cheerville is something that has incubated over in, off of Rockland Road, and then now we have them moving and building a facility, that's exactly what we want in our economic development in our community, is people incubating in one area, growing out of that, building something new, or moving into a larger area, which then in turn frees up that space for something, so that's good. Also, from an incubating standpoint, Half Batch, Half Batch is in that particular strip center, and then now it's building its own really nice standalone building, because it's done so well, so those are both really good, good examples of, of redevelopment. Just something I might mention is the, the volume of what we're handling day-to-day out of the planning office continues to be at an accelerated, very high, very high rate, we do not see that diminishing here anytime, anytime soon. We have several things that, that are gonna be on next month's agenda, and I think I had that right here, and I may read it off if I do, and I don't think I have that, but we have several, several things. One thing to note is the final development plan for Forest Park will be, will be coming before you next week, and there are several other items that'll be coming before you as well, so. There's a lot of things going on, Mr. Chairman.
Speak to a little bit, I don't know if you, you're probably out of school, we've been talking a lot about East Main, but there are some efforts underway-
Yes.
-to begin to provide some opportunities for West Main, why don't you speak to that for a few minutes?
Yeah, we're, we're very excited, this has been a while in the making, but hopefully this week we will finalize the deal with a consulting firm to undertake our West Main Old Town Revitalization Plan, and what we hope with this, we hope to have a new, bold vision of what our community wants for Old Town and for, for West Main Street, looking at a way to entice development, and define the kind of development that we want in that, in that part of town, and what we envision is that this plan will, will tap into the vision of the community, and then produce a plan that represents that, and then we'll have action items, we may have eight or ten action items, that would be, we could take those action items and then start implementing those things. Some of those things could be changes to the zoning over in that area, that could affect how things develop and redevelop, and how we incentivize things to occur over there, as well as transportation improvements, you know, sidewalk improvements, beautification improvements, things that will limit the curb access. You know, to mention one thing, you may want to drive by over at, what's the place? Brian's Motorsports, and we certainly appreciate Brian's Motorsports and their investment in our community, and one thing that they're doing as a part of their investment is they're reducing- And one thing that they're doing as a part of their investment is they're reducing that kind of dangerous curb cut, you know, this kind of open access, where you can kind of come and go on Main Street. They're limiting that, and going to be putting up a grass buffer and some trees, and it's going to really be transformational. And this is just the first step and many steps that we're going to create down through there that will transform Main Street visually, but also transform and encourage the spirit of Main Street to be a really unique sense of place within our great, within our great community. So we're very excited about that, and I think we finally have come to terms with everything, and so we should get that contract here, hopefully by the, by the end of the week, of the week. And then I do, I am going to be, once we engage with the consultant, we'll kind of run out a timeline, and I'm going to get with all of you all and let you know how you're going to be able to participate. There's going to definitely be parts where you're going to have to participate, but I'm going to encourage you to be very active in this planning process, and there'll be plenty of opportunity for all of the planning commissioners to do that, so. Very excited, thank you for asking about that.
Good report, good report. Having no other business, business before us tonight, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded, we are adjourned.